Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 20, 2018. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Kreskowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda will be to adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion is...our agenda is approved, is adopted. We have one proclamation this evening, and that is the Youth First Community of Promise Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. And this will be...let's see. We're proclaiming March 23 as the Youth First Community of Promise Day in the city of Coon Rapids. And let's just do the proclamation because I think most of what's covered is in here. Whereas, the cities of Andover, Anoka, and Ramsey, together with Anoka County and Anoka Hennepin School District #11, joined together in 1995 to form the Northwest Anoka County Community Consortium, designed to create a public-private community partnership to focus on better delivery of existing public services to children and young adults. And whereas, the consortium follows the national framework known as America's Promise, which promotes the five essential ingredients youth need to be successful in life: safe places, caring adults, effective education, a healthy start, and opportunities to serve, also known as the Five Promises. And whereas, the consortium oversees the initiative known as Youth First Community of Promise, which is responsible for mobilizing individuals and collaboratives to support experiences that ensure the Five Promises for young people in the greater community of Andover, Anoka, Coon Rapids, and Ramsey. And whereas, the annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast serves to solidify our communities' resolve in providing these Five Promises for our youth. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Friday, March 23, 2018, be declared Youth First Community of Promise Day in the cities of Andover, Anoka, Coon Rapids, and Ramsey, and a Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be held on that day in support of the Youth First Initiative. We call upon the citizens and our communities to assist the work of the Northwest Anoka County Community Consortium and Youth First Community of Promise to implement a unified vision for youth development in our communities. And we'll be signing that, and that will be also read at the breakfast on Friday. Next item on our agenda is to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move approval of the meetings of March 6, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kreskowiak. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that...those minutes are approved. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first is to authorize final payment to North Valley Incorporated for Project 17-3, Street Reconstruction Burl Oaks. The dates and amounts are reasonable and accurate according to the project file, and the staff recommends final payment to North Valley in the amount of $111,761.35 for Project 17-3 Street Construction Burl Oaks. That was actually item three on our agenda, first on the consent. Item four this evening, and our second on the consent agenda, is to approve the master contracting agreement with Kilmer Electric Incorporated for citywide electrical repairs. In the past, Kilmer Electric Company Incorporated performed miscellaneous electrical repairs throughout the city. Under Project 17-23, Kilmer was awarded a contract to perform LED streetlight installation on segments of Main Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard. To formalize the city's ongoing relationship with Kilmer, a master contracting agreement has been prepared to provide consistency, speed up the process to ensure items are addressed in a timely manner, and allow staff to better manage services provided. Due to the nature of the work and as opposed to relying on a time and material proposal for each specific project, staff is requesting that the city council consider a master agreement with Kilmer Electric Company Incorporated. The agreement outlines a process that will be undertaken for work, including general electric and streetlight repairs, and provides annual pricing rates in the attached letter of engagement. City council approved a similar agreement with Rawlings Electric Incorporated in August of 2017, adding an additional contractor to the city's electrician pool. Will provide flexibility in scheduling and ensure work is performed promptly. So with this, we are approving the master contracting agreement with Kilmer Electric Company and authorize city officials to execute the attached agreement for professional contracting services beginning 2018 and beyond. The fifth item on this evening's agenda, and the last item on the consent agenda, is to accept the 2017 Community Development Annual Report. It almost seems like this shouldn't be on the consent agenda. There's a lot of stuff in here. So let's just...what we're going to accomplish is we're going to...through the consent agenda, we will be accepting the 2017 Community Development Annual Report. But I wanted to just highlight a couple things in here because it's really a very robust report of Coon Rapids. And one of the things I wanted to point out was the success of our Home for Generations II program that's highlighted in there. And the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation has provided grants totaling $44,500 to underwrite the cost to homeowners for architectural consultations required by the program. And this is just 2017 here, right? Twenty-four Coon Rapids homeowners entered agreements with the city to participate in the program, with proposed project values totaling over $1.6 million. Five homeowners closed on loans totaling over $222,000 to complete their remodeling projects. So we've managed to leverage $44,500 from the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation into over $1.6 million in private investment into our housing stock, and that's a really big deal. And I thought somewhere in here it actually went on to talk about...yeah, so in total, there have been 265 applications since this started in 2013, and 94 projects subsidized through this program, leveraging almost $6.4 million worth of home improvements. It's just a...it's just a huge win for the city and for our residents. I don't know if there's anything else anybody wants to highlight out of there, but otherwise that is our complete consent agenda. Councilmember Demmer.
Yeah, it's a really good document to read through, not real thick reading, lots of good pictures. I really liked seeing that the foreclosures are at the lowest point they've been in a really long time. You know, that's really good to see. And then the businesses that were brought in or expanded, you know, there's a $10 million project in the list, there's a bunch of really good new businesses that have come in, or businesses that existed and expanded. So a good summary of a good year.
$115 million in permits last year in 2017. I'm sorry, Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna assume that we're gonna have it available on our website for people to take a look at and highlight, I'm sure, in one of our next newsletters.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, yes, absolutely, we'll have this available for the public. And I just want to thank the community development staff for all the great work that they did, not just in putting this document together, but all the underlying work that was done last year in 2017. It's gonna be a busy year, 2018. A lot of the work that we did last year will now be breaking ground, and a lot of construction activity will be going on. So a lot of great work by the department. I also want to thank Tara Jenkins, who was in our communications area, who really put the nice polish on this document. So it looks phenomenal, so.
We haven't done the final printing of this yet, right?
No.
Okay, good, because Mr. Stemwell had a couple edits today.
Very good.
And Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Also, as part of that, there is the Planning Commission's annual report, and they obviously were very busy in this last year as well, and I want to thank them for their service.
Yeah, yeah, it goes through and talks about the Board of Justices and Appeals and the Planning Commission and...
So there's all three reports, good.
Yeah. All right. And then I noticed Reem Kenworth is open now. I'm not sure how long they've been open. All of a sudden I drove by and it's full of trucks.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I think it's been about a couple weeks that they've been open, so...
Okay.
Yeah. Building looks very nice.
All right. Somebody would like to...
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Kreskowiak.
Yes, a clarification, just a question for Mr. Hammer on the agreement with Kilmer. How much was outsourced with Kilmer Electric in 2017? Was it similar to what was outsourced with Rawlings? Is it a kind of a similar situation with those two companies?
No, Councilmember Kreskowiak, typically what we've done for the past several years is we've done a three-year contract. So every three years, we go out for bids, and then we enter into a three-year contract. So Kilmer Electric had it six years ago, Rawlings has had it for the past three years, and it takes a lot of time and effort to get into going through that process, and then you're stuck with one contractor that is sometimes doing multiple projects. So the approach we wanted to take now was, let's get a few in, understand the costs. So it's not gonna add any more costs to our work, it's just gonna give us some flexibility to get it done a little bit faster. Sharon can maybe speak more to the costs, I don't think she's prepared to do that, but in general terms on an annual basis, any idea, Sharon?
I really even hate to...
Primarily streetlight work.
Okay. Oh, come on, Sharon.
But I really would have to take a look, and I can do that, I can follow up.
And I know Kilmer's done a great job for us, they're a good company, but it didn't look like they've been out to bid since 2015, so that's kind of where my question was coming from.
That's correct, because that would have been three years ago. Our three-year contract expires in 2018, so instead of going through that again, we said, let's look at those two, and I'm also looking at adding one more to that pool. So we would have three electricians, kind of three plumbers, different HVAC contractors, we've got our consulting pool with traffic, stormwater, all of those type of things, so it just gives us a little bit different flexibility versus all the effort and time you put into having someone, and then you're...I don't want to say stuck necessarily, but it's difficult then to bring somebody else on, and we gotta come back for approvals and things of that nature. So it just makes it more flexible for us.
Thank you. All right. So we had a motion by Geisler, a second by Wells. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And the consent agenda is adopted. We don't have any public hearings, bid openings, old business. We're up to new business. To recommend appointments to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. It's been requested that the city council make recommendations to fill one position on the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. Staff advertised the vacancy on the city's website and received four letters of interest. The four candidates, Christopher Geisler, Scott Bromley, Gary Olson, and I'm sorry, Sotia Sar, is that how you say that?
Sotia.
Sotia. Are Coon Rapids residents interested in serving on this board? The Anoka County Board of Commissioners is the entity responsible for the appointment, but the city makes a recommendation to the county on candidates to consider. The letter attached to this memorandum provides an explanation of the nomination and appointment process, we got that. So we actually...we're just recommending a slate of four, and then the county picks from those four then. Is that how it works, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and council, that's correct. We're just simply making a recommendation. If we submit a list with at least three names, and they consider that a valid list, and are required to choose from that, now other cities may also submit a list of three, but combined, we're confining the county board to that slate of candidates. In this case, we had four who were interested, so obviously we need that list of three candidates at a minimum. In addition, I did send council some background information that was forwarded to our office, to you last week, just so you had some of that, but it was not included in this packet.
Okay. All right. Council, any wishes?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I would just like to say, I think it's vitally important that we do submit a list, and I expect that we intend to do that, but I also think it's vitally important that we reach out to the county board to express our interest in having somebody from Coon Rapids put on the Coon Creek Board of Managers, and that's because there is no representation from Coon Rapids currently on the Board of Managers. So I think it's important for us to do this. And so I would then move that our council submit the four candidates that have expressed interest in serving on the Board of Managers, Christopher Geisler, Scott Bromley, Gary Olson, and Sotia Sar as our list to the county, and hopefully they will put somebody from Coon Rapids on the Board of Managers.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Is that a motion close enough to what we're looking for here? Okay. All right. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that motion carries. Item seven is to consider Resolution Number 18-8/6, Accepting Plans and Specifications for Miscellaneous Park and Trail Improvements and Authorizing Solicitation of Bids. The proposed improvements are comprised of the following trail projects: Burl Oaks Park Trail Reconstruction of a 225-foot segment, pedestrian curb ramp installation; up in Prairie Oaks Park Trail Reconstruction, pedestrian curb ramp installation; and in Vineyard Park Trail Reconstruction, Basketball Court Replacement, Pedestrian Curb Ramp Installation. If approved, the advertisement would be published in April with a bid opening scheduled for April 26, 2018. Bid results and a recommendation for contract award would be presented to the council at the May 15, 2018 meeting, and once the contract has been awarded, the work will be scheduled to take place between August and September of 2018. Does anybody need more information on this? Councilmember Demmer?
Just looking for a clarification. On the text of the resolution, it says, "For Vineyard Park Basketball Court Replacement", and on the project location graphics, it says "Basketball Court Reclaim", and so I couldn't tell if there's going to be a new basketball court, or if we're removing a basketball court, and there will be nothing.
We are reclaiming and recreating the existing basketball court in its current location.
So there will be a...
There will be a basketball court.
Fresh basketball court.
Correct.
Thank you.
Fresh. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-6/8, Approving Plans and Specifications and Ordering Advertisement of Bids for the Miscellaneous Trail Improvements.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that motion carries. Item eight on our agenda is to consider a joint powers agreement with Coon Creek Watershed District for Lower Sand Creek Corridor Restoration Project. The Coon Creek Watershed District has authority regarding the operation and maintenance of stormwater facilities and drainage systems within the district, and performs inspections of those systems within Coon Rapids for which it has authority over. In 2015, the annual ditch inspection revealed that the downstream-most section of Sand Creek was a sediment and nutrient-loading hotspot due to the extent of active streambank erosion in this reach. Coon Creek Watershed is leading a project to reduce sediment and pollutant loading, providing long-term channel stability and improve aquatic and riparian habitat along a half-mile reach of Lower Sand Creek between the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad and Zeon Boulevard in Coon Rapids. The attached joint powers agreement approved by the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers at their regular meeting held March 12, 2018, outlines the scope of work and responsibilities to implement the, you know, we're just gonna go LSCCR project, as well as ongoing maintenance provided by CCWD upon completion of the project. Staff provide an input throughout the development of the project, including city utility and trail easement information, and the joint powers agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney. The city will not incur any project costs beyond minimal staff time, as the Coon Creek Watershed District received grants from the United States Environmental Protection Agency of $269,563, and the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources for $195,158 for the project in 2017. Coon Creek Watershed District will work with the city to conduct a neighborhood meeting in advance of the project and notify neighboring residents of the proposed work. The tentative timeline includes a word of contract in September, with work to commence shortly thereafter. Staff will be kept apprised of the project status throughout construction, which is expected to be completed by March of 2019. How...I was gonna walk this trail today, and I didn't make it. How visible is the creek from the trail?
It's pretty visible.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it's a really nice part of the trail.
Just right along it, yeah.
Because what they're proposing is those big root balls and those trees impaled into the banks, you're going, that looks...it looks like we're designing something that looks like it needs to be cleaned out, you know? Maybe nobody else feels that way, but that's the best they could come up with, is all those old trees along there, Mr. Hammer? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a natural way to handle it, you know? You think of what they did at Woodcrest, where it's all cobblestone and riprap, and it's not really that kind of a natural amenity, so it's trying to keep this corridor as natural as possible, eliminate the cost of the removals of the trees and taking them away, so making it more of a natural. And yes, it may look kind of odd initially, but over time, as the bank heals and the new vegetation takes shape, it'll be a much better, more natural design, in my opinion.
You know, in the olden days, we used to just do it with tires and old cars, so... Yes, this is much preferred to that.
I was just surprised when I got down to the pictures, and I went, this doesn't look like a fix. All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that the council approve the joint powers agreement with the Coon Creek Watershed District for the implementation of the Lower Sand Creek Corridor Restoration Project.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Kreskowiak. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Really wish the people at home could see the picture on 12, page 12, where it says to remove all leaning trees, sweeping limbs, and fallen branches, then shows a picture of what a leaning tree looks like, drawn in cartoon form, and then a sweeping limb, and tells us it's not to scale. Just a fantastic...just in case you're wondering what a leaning tree looks like diagram.
They're gonna remove them and stuff them into the bank, and it's like, all right.
All the more reason we need a representative on the water.
The ones that use tires and cars.
The ones that won't.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda, item nine, is to consider a stormwater drainage rate increase. For the year ending in 2017, the Stormwater Drainage Fund will have an operating deficit of approximately $350,000, and is budgeted in 2018 for a projected operating deficit of approximately $175,000, which includes a rate increase of 10%. So to clarify, if we don't pass the rate increase, we're looking at a proposed deficit of $350,000 again.
Probably closer to that.
Okay. Based on past and future expected additional expenditures, it is being recommended that rates be increased, and then we've got a pro forma here to look at. Most of the past and additional future expenditures are in the maintenance and repairs account due to various drainage issues. We spent $185,000 in 2017, more aggressive ditch cleaning, $71,000 anticipated for 2018, and more rigorous work on storm drainage issues associated with past and future street reconstruction projects, projected at $405,000 in 2018, and the need for a new Vector truck, $495,000 in the near future. The city is required to participate in the comprehensive local surface water management plan, currently being prepared to meet requirements detailed in Minnesota statutes 103B. At this point, it is unknown how much additional expenditures will occur due to the results of the plan. But what we are looking at here is a 10%, basically a 10% across the board increase. So for like a single-family home, you'd be going from $10.40 per unit to $11.45. A medium density, $7.60 to $8.35. High density, $4.00 to $4.40 per unit. The biggest, when you're looking at a 10%, the biggest step increases then are commercial and industrial, going from $66 per acre to $72.60 per acre, and that's the same for other public and semi-public property, and then everything else is in between there, but all basically 10%. Is that right, Ms. Legg?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
The part about the new Vector truck, I remember a new Vector truck, this is where you were gonna go too, I was right. I remember a new Vector truck coming up recently because it was so exciting to look up what a Vector truck was. Is this in addition to that one that we already talked about, or is this that we haven't actually made that purchase yet, even though it's been approved, and you're just reminding us about it?
Yeah, the second.
Okay.
So remember that...
So not another Vector truck beyond the one we already did?
Well, actually, remember, we talked about two Vector trucks that night?
Okay.
And we said that we're gonna delay this one until we really needed to buy it. So it's still in the budget. We did buy another Vector truck for the sewer fund, but this is the storm sewer, so we delayed, and hopefully we can get a little bit longer life, but inevitably, we're gonna have to do it at some point. So it's still in the budget, but we have talked about it.
And is there a reason why...so I would have assumed we would...
Depreciate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amortize.
We will.
And depreciate.
We will.
And so we wouldn't need to raise it.
But we still need cash.
Okay.
And every time we add, you know, like infrastructure, whenever we're doing all these reconstruction projects, we're adding that, like in this case, we said $405,000. We take that cash out of this fund, so we need cash to pay for the project, but then we'll amortize this over 30 or 40 years, but every time you do one of these things, you know, it does add to that depreciation amount. Not the full amount, it might be 1/40th, or 1/20th, or however many years you're amortizing, but it still is an increase in the expenditures.
Do we amortize over 30 years? Do we get 30 years of life out of the truck?
Uh, no, we won't amortize that truck over 30 years. We'll amortize that closer to...
Over seven or something, right?
Probably 13 or so.
Okay.
Okay. He said 10 to 15. I said 13. But in any case, in any case, yes, we won't...that whole cost of the truck won't come online immediately.
I was just a little surprised to see a percentage rate increase to purchase equipment that's amortized.
Well, we're doing it for many other things, though.
Okay.
That truck is one of the items in there, but we're so much more aggressive on all these storm ponding areas. You know, the storm drain, I mean, for the audience, I guess, that's to deal with the rain that comes off, out of the sky, off the roofs, away from the driveways, it has to go somewhere. So we're dealing with that. But we're trying to deal with some of those yard issues, and we're trying to do a better job of ditch cleaning and pond cleaning, and then we've got this study that's coming up, we're not sure where that's gonna land us, but we'll know a little bit more after that study's done, what's required. But we haven't had an increase in this fund since 2010, and this is on your utility bill, but it's one of the smallest pieces of your utility bill. So even though the rate, the 10% is pretty high, we haven't had a rate increase, and it's 10% of $10, so it's a little bit more affordable, you know, than like our water sewer rates. And it looks like this year, we won't be coming to you with a water and sewer increase, which is good, so...
Did we have a motion on this yet?
No, I'm sorry.
We didn't, did we?
All right. I can...
Councilmember Demmer, that'd be great.
So move to adopt Resolution 18-50, Establishing Stormwater Rates.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Kreskowiak.
Is the increase, the 10% increase, it's like a dollar per unit?
Is the unit considered one residential? I mean, or is it a unit like 1,000 cubic feet of water?
No, unit is one residential.
Okay. I thought so, I just wanted to clarify that, so it's not a huge increase.
And it's...
Yeah, because we are not measuring this water.
Okay.
You know, there's no meter, this just goes into the storm drain and goes away. So it's sort of an acreage charge.
And is that $1, and is that fund, is that into the enterprise fund?
It's its own enterprise fund.
It's its very own enterprise.
It's its very own enterprise fund, okay.
So it's, it tries to self-balance, you know, that's why when we're in a deficit position, we're trying to raise rates or cut costs, combination of the two, to try to make the fund break even.
All right, and that leads me to my next point, is that, the mayor's point, that even with the increase, we're still gonna see a deficit in this enterprise fund, so the pro forma here that it's looking at is showing a, a deficit for the next few years yet.
That's correct, so we're, we're basically trying to alert you that this is kind of the beginning of a couple of years of rate increases.
Yeah. Councilmember Kreskowiac, are you suggesting we leap ahead by twenty, or?
Uh, no, I'm not, I just, I wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm reading all of this correctly, this pro forma and everything, I, thank you.
All right, Mr. Stenwell?
Mayor and council, I'll just mention today, and, you know, these are things we try to anticipate during the budget process, and there's a, a million other things that get discussed at that time. Certainly, as Sharon mentioned, we anticipate that there will be some additional need for this going forward, and, you know, we'll bring that up again at that time, but we just delay the actual re-increase until we get into the year, and so as we get into the budget process, and we sit down with you in August, we'll reevaluate where things are at then, in this fund, of course, every other one, and, and let you know what it might look like for two thousand nineteen.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. We're on the open mic public comment. Is anybody here to address open mic? You were our only hope, so. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, so we are at other business. Wow. So Thursday night is the Lee Carlson, I was just trying to find the information, the Lee Carlson Center fundraiser down at the Springbrook Nature Center, and it's a chili feed, and they've got craft, craft beer operators coming in there, they've got like ten breweries coming in there. And the Coon Rapids Women of Today, who won the Coon Rapids Chili Challenge here, are basically, now they're taking that to the next level, and they're competing with Fridley and Columbia Heights and other places at, at the Springbrook Nature Center Thursday evening, and I think it's like six-thirty, does anybody, nobody knows?
Five to eight.
Five to eight? Thank you. All right, and they've got two different options, they've got like, it's like ten or fifteen dollars to go there for chili, or thirty-five dollars, and then you get all the craft beer and stuff, too, so, I know what you would do, right? I know what I'm gonna do. So that's, and that's Thursday evening, so I think that's, that's worth supporting, because they also have an office in Coon Rapids now, too, so that just opened last year, so it's worthwhile. Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Stenwell, any other business? Really?
All right. I got one thing, if, if you wanna see a Vector truck, you can go to the Public Works Open House on May twelfth, right? So it's coming up.
All right, then, well, look for a motion to adjourn, I guess.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.